Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting of September the 11th. I hate to interrupt good conversations, but we better stay with our time constraints here. Madam clerk, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Shyland.
Present.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Mr. Schiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Here.
And Mr. Braun.
Present.
Eight council members present.
All right, pretty good. If you all rise with me, Pastor Bruce Williamson is with us again this evening, and it's good to see you again.
Good to be here.
He will lead us in the invocation, and the termination of that will go right into the pledge of allegiance.
I'll do that. Let's take a moment to silence before we begin tonight to remember this day seventeen years past. Three hundred and forty-four firefighters, two thousand nine hundred and ninety-six civilians, two hundred and fifty-five on aircraft, one hundred and twenty-five at the Pentagon. And over the ensuing seventeen years, thousands of others have perished either from fighting this war on terror as a U.S. soldier or from the disease that was gained at the site in recovery. We remember them. Heavenly Father, in addition to paying our respects on the anniversary of nine eleven, we also, Lord, pray tonight for our neighbors to the south and east, North Florida, the Carolinas, Virginia. And no one knows at this time how much deeper into the country it will come or how far north it will go. But we're praying now for those who reside there while time's on their side to take precautions and if possible, to vacate that area. For those that must stay for various reasons, especially emergency services and those that will be taking care of people, I pray for their safety in what could be an overwhelmingly violent hurricane. We are grateful, Lord, to live where we live in the heartland. We've had good rain lately. The intense heat that we experienced for much of the summer has at least dissipated, and we are in a very good place here. We thank you, God, for blessing us. I pray for those that work our streets. They start early, just at daylight, putting in new infrastructure all the way through town. I pray for their safety as they do so and all of our city services that help us in service each day. I lift up our public safety officers and firefighters and all of those that are dedicated to our protection and the goodness of this community. I lift up our mayor, councilpersons, administrators, department heads, and all those that lead this city day to day, clear down the line to the boots on the ground that do the heavy lifting. We praise you, Lord, for those that serve the city on committees, for those that are planning this anniversary for the county and for all other times this community becomes strong as we work together. I lift up those attached to the city family for various and diverse physical needs. That would include but not be limited to Mayor Benton, Chief Myers, Mr. Moore, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, Mr. Shyland, and anyone else who would need that touch from God. Bless those tonight in this session. Any discussions that are held, any decisions that are made, it is our prayer that they first be pleasing to you. Until we meet again, we pray all this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag. Attention, salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor.
Thank you.
At the beginning of each council meeting, we set a time aside for those who would like to share with the council any ideas or any concerns they have within the city. We just ask that you give us your name and your address and that you keep your comments to no longer than three minutes. So at this time, I'll invite anyone who would like to address the council over any idea, concern, et cetera, if they'd come to the microphone, please.
Thank you, Mayor Benton. My name is Linda Ruths. I live at three fifteen West Seventh Street here in the city of Fulton. I want to talk to you tonight about the Task Force for Fair or Safe and Affordable Housing that CMCA has organized. We've been meeting for over a year now, and we have had various people interested in coming to our meetings. I want to thank Mr. Stone for participating in that. We had some tenant forums where we invited specifically tenants to come and discuss their issues, ask questions. The first one we had was well-attended by some council people. And the second one, we planned with a speaker, Eric Qualls, came to talk about tenant legal issues so that they could better understand their rights and how to relate to their landlords. On the evaluation form, the main comment was they were disappointed there were no public officials there to hear their concerns. So I just want to raise that up to you, that they would love for you to know what's on their mind, and it's an opportunity to hear what they're thinking. So tomorrow night, we're going to turn the tables. We have a forum planned for landlords, and I believe we have fifteen landlords who have signed up to come to that. Mr. Stone's going to facilitate part of the meeting, and we'll have other facilitators in discussion throughout the evening. That's will be at the CMCA office from five to six thirty. So I hope that some of you could make that out to hear what the landlords have to say. And then we have another event planned, which is a housing expo. It'll be out at the Callaway Electric Cooperative, and we'll have tables for different groups. Several groups have signed up to offer resources of different kinds for landlords or tenants. And we're looking forward to that. That'll be on Saturday, the twenty-seventh of October, from ten in the morning until two in the afternoon. So we invite you to both of those events. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your work and your efforts in facilitating communication between landlords and tenants. Thank you. Very good. Are there any other visitors who'd like to comment this evening?
Yeah, Mr. Rean.
Sure.
I've got something to say.
Excellent.
My name is Barry McGray, one oh two West Oliver. The first thing I was told by Mike Bell to thank you all for rezoning his property. He's going to Hawaii for seven months and work, and he eventually plans on moving back there once again. So, thank you for Mike Bell. Now then, this is just something for you all to think about. After sitting up there for two years, and I know it's a charter thing, what about you change it to where you're up there for four years? Because the first couple of years, it's a learning process. And I know you probably have to change the charter, but it's something you maybe should consider or think about. I think that's all I've got to say, so thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
I hear Ms. Gray. Good comment. Any other comments from visitors? Give you one more try here. Okay, seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to our, with our agenda. And our next item is the approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda is just a tool whereby city councils can more efficiently move their meetings along and it just let, we just have a number of items that we can approve at one time. So, and on our consent agenda this evening is approval of an event from the Kingdom Christian Academy to be held in Memorial Park on December the first. And also, looks like we have an approval on an event for, from Callaway Youth LGBTQ Alliance for fundraiser and Veterans Park on October the thirteenth. Would any councilperson like to remove anything from the consent agenda? And if not, I would appreciate the motion.
There's no objections. A move we approve the consent agenda is presented.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Yes is having. Thank you. Now move on to unfinished business, and looks like Mr. McDaniel is with us this evening and to discuss designating a couple of properties. If you'd like to come up, David. Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me to come back tonight. I understand we have two properties that have requested for historic designation, and I believe there's some questions about what that means. If I'm going to start there or you want me to?
Anyone have any questions or like to have clarification of the policy on historic designated properties?
Yes, sir. No worries.
Really? Okay, well, you want to go, John, or?
I don't, go ahead.
All right. What the, one of the questions I brought up at the last meeting was, we designate these as historical properties, but then what? Do they just get a plaque? Do they, are they restricted in what they have to do in maintaining the property or upgrading the property? I'm familiar with what I think is a lot more restrictive historical properties, where if you, if your property is designated historical, then you can't put aluminum siding on the thing.
Right.
You can't, you know, put vinyl windows, that type, you know, it's got to be painted a certain color that's historical.
And I like your thinking. Right now, we have two designations, a historic property and a preservation property, according to the ordinance. The historic property is, it's basically, it's identified, it's being historic. We give you a plaque. I think you saw the application that the property owner fills out to get to that status. A preservation property is a lot more detailed. The property cannot be modified past its original exterior. It cannot be added on to without being historically correct and flowing with what it needs to. It cannot be have siding put on like you discussed. It cannot be torn down without going back to the city council and asking for permission for it to be torn down. It, there's a lot of teeth to it. Fulton, Missouri has no preservation properties. To be honest with you, we've never had an application for it, and I don't believe we've even made an application for it. This, this, that count, that ordinance was written almost twenty years ago. We've been working on modifying it for the last three years. We are a CLG community, city, and the CLG has to review it, every, any type of modifications we do, and we've been working on that. And hopefully, within the next six or eight months, we will bring you a new ordinance to clear up some of these items. But you're right, historic property, there's no restrictions on it. They can add on to it, they can put vinyl siding on it, they can change the windows, they can, you know. But hopefully, since people have gone to the trouble to have a designation of historic property, it's a step in the right direction to keep it historic and somewhat the appearance the same. But there's no restrictions to it. The one property on Eighth Street, hopefully you'll remember, the Historic Preservation Commission took it as a positive move for that property because there has been a lot of concern about being torn down or severely modified. And, you know, we do not want to see that. But, once again, we have no control over the owner.
Yeah, I try and buy it every day, and it's a really neat-looking house.
It is.
Tons of possibilities.
Yep.
Tons of possibilities. And an out-of-state buyer, and I do not know the person that bought it, but we actually took it as a little bit of excitement for that property.
Yep.
So, because they, you know, they took the right step to have it.
Thank you.
David, is there anywhere in the, in the current ordinance that states that there's only, that there's two designations? Because I only see one place for one designation in the whole entire thing.
It is very confusing. The historic designation is at the beginning, and then somewhere in there, it has slipped in about the preservation property, and then that's where it goes through all the details of what, you know, what has to be done.
Because, I mean, I certainly read it a completely different way, that anything that would fall into, that we would designate would fall into this ordinance. And so this ordinance isn't being, being adhered to, is that correct?
No, sir, it is being adhered to.
Okay.
Yeah, and, but it's very hard to follow. I was on Historic Preservation Commission two years before it dawned on us. But unfortunately, nobody has ever, you know, wanted a preservation designation.
Well, I mean, because I read through, as I read through it, and I've read through it several times to try to, to understand all of it. I see it as if we designate a home as a historic home, it falls into the guidelines of this. And then, they, there is the guidelines that have to follow. Now, colors do not matter in the, I mean, specifically in there, it says that colors do not matter. There's several spots that it says that it does not matter.
Most, most of the language in the ordinance is for a preservation home, preservation property, which there are none.
But I don't... Okay, I guess I don't see the difference, and I don't see anything in the, in the ordinance that even talks about a historical property.
It's, it's a very, it's at the very beginning, and it's a very few paragraphs. And I'd be glad to, you know, show it to you, you know, after the meeting or at another time. But Jeff was on there, Richard was our, was on our commission for a while, Mary's on it now. But in the early days, we, we have been addressing this for a long time. And I apologize.
So would it be a big, would it be a big concern if, if the property on Eighth Street was done and came back for the, for the designation that they're looking for?
Well, we can go back with anything. I don't, I don't want a property owner to get discouraged over it. And the commission and the council, in that, in that statement, for years has said, you know, if you get this designation, we're not, there's no, there's no, you know, there's no rules to say you can, you can have to, you have to abide by it. It's just a designation. And I mean...
So then why would it even come to the city council, I guess would be my question, if it has no designation of any kind?
Well, it does have designation though, historic designation. And...
Okay.
There's no, there's no rules they have to abide by. It's, it's thanking a person for going to the trouble to keep their house historic, and, you know.
I think they're great. I really, I mean, what a lot of them have done yourself, I mean, many of them, the Lewis's have done, I mean, a lot of wonderful, wonderful things, and I really, I'm not, I'm not saying that at all, but I just, I guess I, some of my, my deal is with the ordinance that we have, that I don't see how we're not following, why we're not following.
Some of the, years ago, when the ordinance was approved and we designated some of the first homes, we actually brought those homeowners in, and the city council presented them with the plaque and made it much more formal, much more public, you know, going for a little bit of the publicity and more of the feel-good and, and thank you.
The last designation we did, we did that, and we were planning on doing that with this.
Right.
If I could walk down memory lane, and Steve, you can correct me here. I was on the council when we passed this ordinance. And at that time, property rights was a main topic and a main concern for homeowners. We were not trying to, so we were trying to reach a compromise for those folks who would like to have their homes designated and also protect the property rights of other owners that they didn't, not necessarily. And that's also at the time when we established the districts, the historical districts. So this is, you're looking at a real compromise here. The ordinance is more intent upon encouraging voluntary compliance and also participation. Okay? So, yes, I mean, if you want to put more teeth in it, sure, you can do that. Go ahead, Steve.
Well, I think that the last few boards we've had on historical preservation, you don't hear much from people. But as the mayor said, in the beginning, you know, dogs and street lights or loud noise would bring people into council. But the personal right on houses filled up the council chambers on that. And our theory was, if we compromise with them, if someone bought one and they wanted to fix it up, but they still want that designation, because at that time, you could get two percent money if, if you had your... The whole intent was not to fight them, but try to make them, if they want to buy them and fix them up. And I think Vicki, Vicki did quite a few, moved one from down there at the college, the U. David, uh, David Moe Main House up on Fifth Street. So, you know, we've had some success by solely working with them, and some's taken longer than has. But I think we learned that we can't just tell them, okay, you give it when you finish, or they're not going to do the project. That's my thought of it.
Sure. But we, we are evolving towards putting some teeth in it. And, you know, you can't just tear it down, which, you know, is a concern of a lot of these properties. And the ordinance will evolve with that. But it's tough to follow under the CLG guidelines and to do everything that the way that they wanted to do. And like I say, we've been working on it, I know, for three years. Richard, I don't know how long it's been since you were there, but we were working on it then. And, you know, yeah, I mean, it's, it's...
The time that I was on it, I actually attended a state meeting on this, and it, you know, half of that day was spent on how to reword your ordinances and what, what you want to put in. And I think there's even a third designation from the state that you can get that's kind of an in-between the, the just, you know, recognition of historic and then all the way to preservation. There's, there's a halfway mark in there also. But it, it also encompasses the opportunity for creation of the historic districts. And then, then that's when you get into some of this land grant money and some of this housing and improvement money that you can get from the state and from the, from the federal government. It, it, it kind of all goes together. And, you know, some of it's, it's very restrictive and some of it's very open.
Well, you know, on our, on our ordinance, when we, when we established this brick district, and then we've increased it in size just recently.
Historic district, yes.
And, and actually, it, it talks about that in this ordinance. And then, it doesn't really, the ordinance doesn't necessarily specifically say a house. It's, it's talking about every house that's in it. Yeah, so now we've kind of got a, I mean, it's a, it's a mess.
Yes, it's a mess.
But the commission's doing a great job going through this ordinance and going through this process, step by step, and then having to match it up with what the state requires and what other historical districts require and what they've done. I mean, it's, it's not an easy process. It's not just simply what we want to do in the city of Fulton. It's got to match a lot of different things.
Well, the, the new proposed ordinance, when we get there, is modeled after Washington, Missouri, if I remember correctly. And it talks about a lot of this. But, you know, like I say, we're, we're at a snail's pace.
And I appreciate what you're doing. I mean, I really do, because I think they're very, all, a lot of them are very, very neat. They're, they're special, if you like that kind of home. Some people don't like the older homes. They want brand-new's.
That's correct.
And I liked your sentiment about that the designation is really about encouraging that homeowner to do, to keep it up or to improve it or even to take, you know, a property like the A Street property and really put a lot of improvement and a lot of money into it.
I, I take that as a very positive note of what the, what the property owner is doing. And like I say, he is out of state, so, I mean, you know.
So we really don't, but with that guy, we really don't know what he's going to do.
Right.
Theoretically.
I, I believe, I believe more is...
I mean, he, he just says that he's going to remodel it.
Right.
But there's no timeline or, see, and I think if we were going to do an ordinance or, or if you're looking at that part of it, it, it almost needs to be some kind of a timeline or something on it. Wouldn't you think so? I mean, you know, right now, that house is scheduled to be tore down.
Right. And unfortunately, a lot of these properties and the property owners are dealing with a limited budget, and it, it's a process. It takes a long time.
Yeah, I get that.
And even the ones that have been with historic designation are, excuse me, that have been, been designated by the state, you know, it was, it was a long period of time and a long process, you know. The David Moe Payne House, which was relocated, you know, I mean, that was over the course of years, you know. So it, it takes a while, but anyway.
Are there any other questions for David?
So I, I think we all are looking forward to the revised ordinance that we're working on.
Yes, we are.
And I will, I'll also mention that...
If you are old, it doesn't matter if you don't follow it.
Their commission meetings are published, and they're open, so, you know, you all are welcome. We don't have to just restrict it to council liaison. So if you have ideas that you'd like to share with the entire commission, I know they'd love to hear them.
Right, next Tuesday at one o'clock. Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Do I have a motion on approval of that property? These properties?
I, I'm perfectly fine with nine ten Court Street, but I still have an issue with B. four ten East Eighth Street.
Why don't we go ahead with just the Court Street first?
You can, you can word your, you can word your movement anyway, or your motion any way you'd like, so, okay. But if, and if you want to take each property single, we'll move on with nine ten Court Street. Do I have a motion to approve that designation?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion, second, to approve the designation of historic property, Fulton Historic Property for the nine ten Court Street property. Is there any further questions or comments on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. The yes is having. Thank you. So we'll approve that. Now we'll move on to the property located at four ten East Eighth Street. Again, a request for Fulton Historic Pres- uh, Historic Property. Uh, do I have a motion to, uh, to, uh, approve this request?
I'm going to approve that request based upon the recommendation by the Historic Preservation Commission.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion second to, uh, adopt the Historic Preservation's, uh, recommendation on this property. Is there any further questions or comments?
Yeah, there, there is. We, we have a ten-page ordinance for the city that is not being followed for any of it. And, and I, I, I see nothing in the ordinance that designates a difference between a historic preservation property and a historic property. In the ordinance, if you read it, it says it's one of the most pristine things that the city does for a homeowner. And, and, and this property does not fall into that at this point. I, I can't, I don't understand why we have an ordinance that, that's not being followed. Why would it come to us if it's not, if we don't have an ordinance to follow? We have something to follow. And there, there's another part to it when it comes to historic districts that we'll get into in just a few minutes. But, um, I, I don't understand that. I don't understand at all how we can have an ordinance and, and not be following the ordinance.
Dennis. So how would we follow the ordinance in relation to this one piece of property?
Well, it, it's, it's all laid out in, in the ordinance. If you read it, Ballard.
Yeah.
On, on, in, in my opinion, on the way it reads, is exactly how the property should be handled. They should sign that they know of the improvements that they can and can't do. There's, there is permits that they have to purchase to rehab the house and guidelines they have to follow. And, and none of that is being followed. If none of that's being followed, what sense does it make to even have the ordinance? Or it, for it to even come to us? I mean, it's laid out pretty specific in, in my opinion, when it comes to some of that stuff, by all means.
John, if you don't approve it the way it is, you could table it and have them look into it a little bit further and we can come back next week and, and two weeks and so. And address it again. That's another option you have.
Well, that's.
I, I, I'm okay with that. I mean, I.
Question. For the code enforcement officer, or maybe you can answer it, Mr. Johnson. The designation, and my theory, and somebody on the housing, or historical preservation, it was an incentive to make them do it. Cause we wasn't getting a lot of bikes in the eighties and the nineties to buy these houses and do this. But if you give him all this, he still has to go to Dennis in order to apply for the codes to do any, before he does any work on this house.
Yes.
And, you know, even if we give him the designation, he sighs after a year, he ain't done nothing on it. And just, we need to tear it down or, you know, it, it's, it's just a piece of paper we give him. But it's an incentive, as McDaniel, as David said, to get people start to work with it. So my goal was maybe he'll come to Fulton, look at his property and then Dennis can tie him down to what, what is, this, what is his real plans of the property.
Good point.
Well.
I mean, we're not losing anything. We can take it away. Our, we still consider it condemned if he doesn't do anything with it.
It's not, again, I just go back to the ordinance that the city has in place that's not being followed.
Well, I think we kind of interpreted differently than I, being new, but we might be off a little bit, but that was our goal anyhow.
Well.
I think, does anyone else have any clarification that they need for, before we vote on it?
I would like to table for further, I would like to table four ten East Eighth Street until, till then, maybe the next meeting, so others can maybe have an opportunity to read through the ordinance and look at it.
I'll second that.
Very good. I have a motion second to table a consideration on four ten East Eighth Street. I don't see any, uh, need for discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Uh, four ten East Eighth Street is tabled. And we'll look in and see if we can give you some more information on that. Very good. Well, now move on to new business. And, uh, looks like, uh, we're gonna have our on the bricks event again September the twenty-second. And is anyone here from the Brick District wants to visit? Thank you. Ms. Bell.
Should state the obvious, I'm not Gary Vayner, but he's ill and I'm standing in him.
He's taller than you, right?
I'm standing in for him this evening. I think I've spoken with Courtney and she said everyone has got a copy of the proposal that we had presented to the council for approval on, on the event, the layout and what our needs might be for that day. Should I review that or do you have questions concerning it in any way?
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Bell? Pretty self-explanatory. Okay. Entertained a motion?
I'll make a motion later.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion second to approve the event for September the twenty-second entitled Art on the Bricks. Uh, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All of them in favor, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Thank you. Yes is have it.
This is the easiest thing I've done all day. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad we saved it for last. Okay, very good. Let's move on to, uh, item B, which is the, uh, Parks and Recreation Park Reservation Policy Discussion. Clay, you wanna give us your thoughts on this one? Tell us what.
What we're proposing is a policy change to our facility reservation policies. Basically, we're proposing that if a person or an organization, uh, wants to reserve a facility and they want us to waive the fee, that that request would have to come before the city council and the city council would have to approve that. Or not approve it. Courtney, Courtney and I talked a little bit today about the logistics of it. And I think if we went with this policy, we, we would require them to pay upfront at the time of reservation. And then if they came to the council two weeks, four weeks later, um, and you all approved the fee waiver, then we would reimburse them. That, that fee. I think that's probably the simplest way.
It seems like there's been more and more requests for fees to be waived lately.
I see.
And I get a little nervous when we say, yes, we'll waive it for one and we won't waive it for the next one. And when we charge some, we don't charge some. I just think we're setting ourselves up for bad situation.
So what are the fees? Is it?
The, the fee structure is, uh, I think it's on the third page, um, item F. And, and they vary between forty dollars for shelter rental, all the way up to a hundred twenty-five for the scout cabin rental. And then there's some incidental fees in there also.
Clay or Bill, what are some of the examples of, of waivers that are approved? I mean, are we talking about like nonprofit organizations that, is that usually who we've been approving?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the policy, item three in the policies, you know, gives the Parks and Rec office some discretion. And I, I try to use my best judgment. And probably what I, I weigh it against is whether or not the council would approve that. If, if it's a charity organization, if they're raising money, um, some ones that we do, obviously the street fair, we waive the fees for. United Way, Relay for Life, um, some Super Sam functions. So those type of functions. I also try to work, work with the schools a little bit. Um, you know, I think it's important in a small community that we work together with. When you have limited resources, I think it's very important that we work together and, and share those resources. So, uh, again, I just try to use my best judgment. Do we turn some people away? Yes. Um, we say no to some people and, and we approve some, so.
And I guess, I, I can do kind of what he says. I guess my philosophy on who we waive and who we don't is if it's a, if the city is a sponsor of the event, if we're participating. You know, we, we obviously sponsor and support the street fair. United Way is one, is the only, pretty much the only service organization that we sponsor and allow even paycheck deductions for.
Exactly.
At, at tables. But the other ones, we don't.
I mean, would there be opportunity, I mean, when I was reading through this, you know, I was imagining that the ones that we were approving were probably like the nonprofit organizations, somebody that's gonna come to us. And, and is it designated five oh one C, something like that?
Yeah, and, and that's kind of what I use to judge about too.
And I didn't know, would that just make it simpler to put it in there, that, that nonprofit organizations have the opportunity to request waiver?
I wouldn't say it's waived.
Yeah, you.
Well, I didn't know if we would just want to say waived because some of them might want to go ahead and pay. They might want to, you know, contribute, but.
Well, I, I would say.
I mean, would that simplify a lot of this of what might then also still come to us or be turned down?
Well, I, my experience, my thirteen years of experience are if someone comes to the council with a pretty good cause, that we, we waive the fees if they request it. I, I don't know that I recall, recall anybody ever being denied. And I think what you get into with the nonprofit organizations, some are really nonprofit. They're, they've done the paperwork. They're, they're an organization. And some are just kind, kind of nonprofit.
Well, and that's, you know, we have the, the most recent example was they were going to be applying for nonprofit status, but they're not right now. So that, that particular event would not be approved for a waiver because they're not currently a nonprofit organization. I, I, I just thought that might be an opportunity to simplify.
And, and I agree with you. I think the problem is there's probably a lot of good fundraising causes out there that aren't organized by a nonprofit organization. And, and that's, you know, that's something we'd have to consider.
They want to put forth the effort to come before the council and request it and allow that thing. Okay.
Clay, how many requests do you think you get a year for, for rental permits to, to rent a space?
How many have we waived this year?
How, how many people want to deal?
No.
I, I would, I would be speculating. Yeah, I'd say off the top of my head, twenty to thirty. Yeah, I don't, and it varies from year to year.
Mayor?
Clerk. Well, I think it was eight years ago, Councilman Moore brought this subject up because we had the same problem. I just want to simplify it for you. Everybody pays. Fulton's too cheap on all their facilities. Go to Columbia and Jess, McLean Park in Jess City is five hundred dollars to rent. That bicycle mayor that Columbia used to have, his park in Stevens is six seventy-five to rent. That shelter over there, of course, it has built-in bathrooms. It has air. Now Clay has a scout cabin that has air, heat, new windows, a hundred and twenty-five dollars. There's not even a commercial business to rent you their back room in here in a restaurant for a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So when they say they can't, oh, we have fundraisers, well, schedule that one twenty-five and you'll fundraise and raise it. It's the money, how many years did, I've been here thirty-four years and we have scraped and scrimped in the park system and no one would ever raise the rent on none of the shelters. Tell me Humphreys Pavilion over there, Ball Field beside it, uh, the other one down there, forty dollars. What does forty do? Some people go to McDonald's and waste that because they don't want to cook, you know? I mean, simplify it. Everybody pays because we're too cheap for our park facilities. That's the end of my spiel.
I just don't want it to look like we're discriminating against, against anybody by not waiting when they ask.
Oh, I, I mean, there is probably something that would come up in the parks, like the two-hundredth of the, of Callaway County. Somebody said, could we go over and do that? I think everybody could buy why you did that, but just give all the, you, you, then they want you to come and you, you go, you either go out there and you buy from them or you buy food from them or you give to them on the street. Well, they should help pay for all the park facility, for all the children and adults and seniors who use it. And that's just my feeling.
And Councilman Moore, I think that's kind of what this policy, Clay, correct me if I'm wrong. That's kind of what this policy says, is everyone pays. And then if they do want to come to you guys and they do want to request that the, the fee is waived, it would then be reimbursed. So I think that's what we're talking about right now. It would be, everyone pays across the board unless they come to the council and that's reversed.
Well, also one thing, when they come to the council to ask to have the fees waived, is that just going to be stuck in the cassette agenda? Or is that something's going to be brought out?
As of now, it's not. It's something, um, if, if they have multiple aspects of their request, it comes to them and I ask them to come here. That's up to you guys though. If that's something you want.
I wouldn't want it just in the cassette agenda.
No, I wouldn't either. I'd like it separate, yeah.
Too much disappears in it now.
We have to watch, read it, yeah.
I, I think one or two things are gonna happen. If, if we adopt a policy that everybody has to pay, unless you go to the council, I think it will discourage some people from, because some people just won't want to come to the council. They just try to pay the forty dollars. The other side of it is, um, there's going to be groups that come to you that have been getting the fees waived for maybe forever. And, uh, the, the scouts are a very good example. Um, they've been using a scout cabin since way before my time at, at no charge. So, you know, is that an organization that you want to, that you'll have, you'll have to consider that because they'll be.
Well, it's named after them. They should.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, that's, we're waiving the fees for them.
That's a good point.
And if, if we're gonna do it consistently across the board to everyone and you don't want me to pick and choose who we do it to, then I'm gonna send everyone here.
You also don't want to run off nonprofit organizations from, from using the facilities. They bring in two or three hundred people and they, they buy stuff when they're in this town. They buy gas, they buy food. You don't want to run them people out of town either. You gotta, you gotta consider that.
I had a separate question that's later on in the, in the draft. And it's just understanding, the alcohol permit and the noise permit go to the city clerk?
That is correct.
But the reservation goes through Parks and Rec? Is that, is that an ordinance? Thing, is there a reason why if I'm gonna use the shelter and I want an alcohol permit and a noise permit, why I can't do that all through Parks and Rec? Is there a legal reason?
Because all the permits go through the.
All go through the.
City clerk's office. Yeah, so, so we, we take the reservation downstairs. They have a form, they carry it upstairs and, uh, they handle all the permits. And sometimes they'll make the reservation and they'll come back at a later date, closer to their event and decide, okay, we need a noise permit or we need an alcohol permit. And then some, some choose not to.
And then on the, you know, while we're talking about revising the policy, on the, the reservation schedule, the calendar that it's, you know, the book is closed until January one, rather than a, a floating twelve-month period or any of that. Has that ever been, has that been considered and talked about and just turned down that?
It, it makes it, it makes it easier for us, um, just because we don't have, we don't have a reservation system, a software system. We, we use Google calendars and, um, and it also keeps somebody from paying in one year for the next five years.
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be for five years, but, you know, if, if I'm sitting here on December the tenth and I want an activity on the fifth of January, I have to wait until the first of January to even make my reservation. Because the book doesn't open until.
And, and we've, the way we approach it, we think that's fair for everybody, because then everybody has a, has a chance at doing that. We, we've had requests to, to make reservations five or six years out.
I'm sure you.
For, for events, so, um, and, and maybe if, if we upgrade the software, the reservation software, at some point that might make it a little easier for us to track all that stuff.
Thank you, Clay.
So would entertain a motion for approval of this policy or, uh, denial either way, whatever.
I move to approve the re, revised policy for Parks and Rec reservation.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion second to approve the Parks and Rec res- reservation policy. Uh, that, uh, included in your packet. Is there any further discussion of that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Yes is have it. Thank you.
And I guess I need, Clay, this will be on all new reservations after today, correct? So there may be a reservation that you took and have, have waived the fee before today.
Yeah.
We don't have to review those, correct?
It, it says September first, I think on there, but as of today, we'll, we'll start enforcing that policy. So if there's reservations that were made before today, we'll, uh, we'll honor those.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Well, now we move on to item ten, which is county concerns. This is a time that you can bring to, to us that any item that you'd like to discuss that's not on the agenda. If any council person has something, if it's, please raise their hand.
I was wondering what the status of our radar detector is.
Who's in charge of the airport? Is that where it is?
No, it's the one down on Wood Street.
Okay. Radar what?
The radar speed sign. Radar speed sign that was on Wood Street. It was effective and we need to send that back to the manufacturer and get another one. We've yet to get the one back, get a good one back.
So it's been, what, two weeks?
I haven't been keeping track in my mind, but.
That's about right.
When the new one arrives, we'll get it back up.
So we're going to wait for them to send it to us and then bug them a little bit?
It's under warranty.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we haven't paid them.
It's effective, the sign's not doing any good, so.
Well, that's true.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have down here? Yes.
Mayor, I had to thank you to pass along one of the other hats that I wear in the community as I'm on the Board of Directors for the Ambulance District. And we've gone through, we purchased a property out by the Tanglewood Golf Course. We're going to do some renovations. And over the last couple of months, there have been a lot of assistance provided by the department heads. Many of the department heads have been involved in it. The administration's been involved in it. And even some of the department staff have been involved to get us to the point where we're able to put a bid out for construction and reconstruction. I just wanted to pass on that. Thank you from the Ambulance District.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else have a concern down here? John?
I, I do, and, and it's in reference to a reading that we will have for a third reading tonight, back to the ordinance and powers and duties of the historical district. I believe that we really should take a look before we vote on fifteen twelve, but I just want to bring it up before because in the, in the, in the ordinance, it talks about any rezoning that happens within the district. The historical district should go to the historical district first, then planning and zoning, and then to us. So, and that hasn't, that, I can't find it anywhere where that happened in that way. Thank you.
Mr. Moore, did you have something?
Yeah, it'd be really short. The same subject I'm on, on Jefferson Street. I still want to know how long we want to let a half of the truck sit on a trailer. It's been twelve months now. And I, I, I just don't see why you let it just sit there. I don't care if the trailer's got a license on it. It doesn't move anywhere.
What, what's the address? Uh, when is where it is?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Okay.
That's all I have to do.
I got a couple of things.
Very good. Go ahead. Councilman Vaughn.
Two meetings ago, I, I said something about the house on Sixth Street and you, you give a report that, that it had a court date. I was wondering if there's any update on that.
The court date happened?
It's my understanding that they moved, maybe moved some people in yesterday. More attention, more.
They didn't get our permission, if they did.
I, I, I'm sure they didn't get.
They don't, they do not have electricity yet. Dennis wants to come up and kind of tell what you know, what you learned today.
Yeah, I talked with the attorney today and the judge hasn't signed the court order, but there's a court order enforcing him to bring the property up to code with licensed contractors. And so I've been in contact with one of the contractors that has been over there. He, the contractor has permit, electrical contractor, he's been over there to do some work. We're trying to get ahold of the property owner to schedule an inspection of the work that has been done. So that's where we're at right now with that property.
The court order gives them sixty days to use professional labor contractors on the, as I understand it, the electric, the plumbing and the heating and cooling. The safety, the safety aspects of the whole thing.
Sure. I guess as a follow-up question, Richard mentioned that people have moved in there. Is that allowed, legal?
And I don't know that for a fact. But I was told that they, they, it looked as if somebody was moving in.
The side we're inspecting, according to the court order, there's no one supposed to be living in the other side. If, if they do, then that side has to be brought up to code. We're just inspecting the one side that will have electricity and plumbing and water.
So we're.
It's a duplex. The property's a duplex. The property we're addressing is.
A house is a duplex?
Yes, it has two addresses, two fourteen, two, two twelve, two fourteen, Sixth Street. We're addressing two fourteen.
Okay.
And the basement.
And, well, yeah, the basement goes under both of them, but the electrical and everything is in two fourteen that we're dealing with.
So each, each unit has got separate, separate electric?
Separate electric, separate water.
Okay, all right. Supposed to. Yeah. Supposed to, anyway. My second thing was, two meetings ago, I brought up about trash cans on Court Street, and I was wondering if we ever looked into that.
No, no, we have not. We had, we did have them for a while, but we haven't looked, we have not looked at the new ones in the last two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Anybody else have anything? Okay, we'll move on with the agenda then. Resolution number thirty-three fifteen is a resolution authorizing Mayor to enter into an agreement on stormwater management plan with HDR Engineering. And, uh, Ms. Reclu, would you please, uh, present Resolution thirty-three fifteen for consideration?
Yes. And Resolution, uh, Resolution number thirty-three fifteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the stormwater management plan update within HDR Engineering in the amount of not to exceed twelve thousand dollars in estimated and effective. I make a motion to adopt Resolution number thirty-three fifteen at this council meeting.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in second to adopt Resolution thirty-three fifteen. Is there any further discussion or questions on this, uh, resolution, on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good. Thank you. What about fifteen twelve? We know it didn't go to historical preservation.
Yeah, I've, that's not something I'm, I have to probably look into that situation.
I'm going to pass by a resili, uh, excuse me, we're, we're going to ordinances, uh, third reading ordinances. I'm going to pass by fifteen twelve so we can research, uh.
Ms., uh, may I make a comment, sir?
Yes.
Uh, I'm the reader of that bill and you have the right to pass it by. But I think it's unfair that you want to sit here and you want to change the ordinance in the middle. These people went through their due process. Pass this order and let it go ahead. Then for the next anybody, we don't read them until we all sit down and discuss our ordinance together, what your complaints are. It's not fair. They put in five, four, five months. It's been a commercial property, right?
Steve, I would, I have no issue with what they want to do, but I think as a city that we have to follow the ordinances that we have. If we don't follow the ordinances, I would not even have seen this, Steve, had I not been looking into Eighth Street, okay? Because I wouldn't have went and pulled the historic and read the whole thing. I, so, we just have to follow the rules of the, of the ordinance.
But I'm willing to take you to that challenge, but these, it's no fair for these people to wait around for four or five more months till we decide.
We, as the city council, can we not say that if they have somebody that wants to buy it and keep the building as it is? We've been told that that building is a hundred-year-old building, used for lots of different things. To me, that's a historical building in this town.
But almost all the things it was used to was commercial in the past.
And, and so in the historic district, you're going, you want to, you want to rezone it as C two and potentially put right in the middle of the historic district that has been redid, done, potentially a garage or potentially anything else that, that can fall into the C two.
If I get in on your discussion here, from my perspective, whatever the council does, we want to make sure it's legal. And there's no sense, and even if, if we do not follow procedure, it will not be a legal issue, even if we go ahead with it. And I apologize to those that have been sitting here waiting to hear what we're going to do. However, I think it behooves us to make sure that we're definitely on legal grounds here. And yes, we're all sworn to uphold the ordinances of the City of Fulton. So Councilman Vaughn is, is right dead on on that. And I, I, I like your passion, Councilman Moore, but I think we, we need to back off and it's, it's very similar to what we did out south, you know? We, we didn't do, uh, a good research on our end of it. If that's truly in fact in the ordinance, then we need to make sure it's there. So let's make sure that we, we get it done right, okay?
If, if you would like, I have it right here in front of me. I'd be happy to read it. If that would help.
It won't make any difference if it's there, you know?
Okay.
We're going to have to go back anyway, so. So I'm going to skip by that one and move on to ordinance number fifteen thirteen, which is an ordinance fixing the tax rate and levying taxes for the calendar year of twenty eighteen. Councilman Vaughn, would you please present this for third reading?
I have a question. Can we confirm, can someone confirm whether or not seven eleven and seven fifteen Nickel Street is considered part of the historic district? Is there anyone in this room that can stand up and clarify? Mr. Hudson?
Go to the website and look at the, the map that's on the website.
I have a map at home. We all have maps.
Council members, if you're considering the historic district, Court Street, the Court Street district starts at West Seventh Street and goes to Second Street. It goes from Market Street to Jefferson Street. This building is further up than West Seventh. To my knowledge, there is no historic district in the park that this building is located. To my knowledge, this building has never been designated a historic building. It's just been there for a hundred years and everybody thinks it's historic. But there is no, there is no paperwork anywhere that I'm aware of that says this building is historic.
Mr. Vaughn, can we double, can we see the map real quick?
Yeah, I mean, I'm pulling it up myself. I remember exactly where it's at.
I mean, if we can just move it down in the agenda.
Let, let me have a motion for tabling it and then we'll, we'll, we'll consider it next time.
Okay.
Thank you. I have a motion second to table fifteen twelve. All those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, fifteen twelve is tabled. Thank you. Now we'll move on to fifteen thirteen. Councilman Vaughn, would you please present fifteen thirteen?
Bill fifteen thirteen, an ordinance fixing the tax rate and levelling taxes for the calendar year of twenty eighteen on all taxable property in the City of Fulton, Missouri, and establish an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill fifteen thirteen for final passage at this meeting.
Second. Very good. Thank you. I have a motion in second to advance fifteen thirteen for final consideration. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
Excuse me, all those opposed, no.
No.
I have one no and seven yeses. Thank you. Uh, we'll now move on to announcements. Those are in your packet or they're on your agenda, so I'm not going to reemphasize any of those. Uh, I will be putting, I'm going to comment on the work session that will be on October the ninth. We'll be working on that agenda in the, well, next beginning after we come back from, from ransom. So if you have anything on that that you haven't already discussed with me, please give me a shout.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a location?
Well, you can research that while we're in that closed session and then we can come back.
Jeff, I can't get this thing.
I've got it loaded.
He's got it. Jeff's got it.
So Les, Les, would you sign me up here?
Yeah, Les.
The property would be in this shaded area. So that appears to be an historic district.
I can't get mine open right now.
The hand is.
It's the other. What's that?
When you pull up the historic map.
While I'm researching that, I will advise council, I do have a need for executive session. And we do discuss a plan.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I make a suggestion or a move that we go to executive session and come back?
We may make a decision after, after we come back, so I don't know why we can't go on to the executive session and then reconsider fifteen twelve when we come back. Because I think it'll be a short executive session.
The Eighth Street Historic District is how it's designated on the map.
Sure.
According to this map.
We're not organizing anyone.
This is totally confusing. Okay, John, you've got this reservation, uh, board is in front of you. Look at section sixty-two dash thirty-one.
Sixty-two dash thirty, number fifteen is where it states.
Six, sixty-two dash thirty-one. Fulton Historic Property and Fulton Historic District Identification. Okay, which is what I was talking about earlier. Okay, now what were you stating?
Okay, talking about fifteen twelve and it not coming to you as in sixty-two thirty?
That was under, that was under the definitions?
Powers and, and duties, yes.
Right, right. I think that's just under definitions.
Review, review, review proposed amendments, applications for special permits, and applications for zoning variances that affect city historic districts or his historic properties to make the recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Board and then on to the city council from there.
Okay, well, what I was going by was sixty-two thirty-two, which we have had this confusion, remember, last few years. Uh, it says a Fulton Preservation Property Identification in addition to Historic Districts and Designation of Properties Earning the Title, a Fulton Preservation Property, which there are none. There are none. And, um, and I am not aware of the.
So, so we're going back to, back to Eighth Street, David? Is that what you're talking about?
No, sir. I'm talking about the property that.
No, I, I'm saying that it's in the district. It's in the historic district. It's not that the property is designated, but it's still in the district.
Correct.
That, that it falls, it lays within the district.
To best my knowledge, there's no, there's no restrictions on any property in any historic district.
The, the ordinance says that it is.
And, and, and once again, would you, would you please read to me which, where you read on that ordinance?
Sixty-two thirty, number fifteen.
Powers and duties.
I would say it's in the district.
In which paragraph?
The entire number fifteen there.
Periodically review the zoning ordinance?
No. Review proposed amendments, applications for special permits. Here you go. It's okay. Number fifteen there. I, I, I hear you saying that you've never done it, but that's, that's, that's.
We, we told everybody that, that property lies in historic, historic history, that they didn't have to go through this process. So I, I don't, I don't think this council.
I guess another here that will, that the council will need to discuss and we'll have to look at the ordinance. have to look at the ordinance, that we'll need to decide if we're going to split, is this property was C2. It sat vacant for six months and according to our zoning and our code, it automatically reverted back to a residential.
Right.
Well, that code change never went to the Historic Preservation Commission to be decided.
Which none ever have.
So, so again, it should have. It shouldn't have reverted to residential in the first place if it was required to go to the Historic Preservation Commission, which means the code, the revert, what we're trying to reverse here never should have happened in the first place. So, you know, we've got lots of hairs that we're going to have to split here on the code.
Very good.
I'm sorry to be the bad, I mean, I'm not.
And this is an argumentative, this is a discussion.
It's literally.
These are all good points.
The property was never C2, it was R3. It was being used as C2.
Oh, okay.
It was being used as a non-conforming use. It was R3 on the district map.
The entire time?
Yes.
Okay.
It's R3 on the maps. It's always been used as a C2.
Communicated to me that it was C2 and reverted to R3.
So as long as it stayed a commercial use, it could stay that way, but it sat empty. So then it could not, will no longer be used as a commercial building.
Okay.
It's because it's in R3.
Thank you. That wasn't how it was explained to me in the beginning. So it's always been. It's always been R3. Okay.
Very good. Just one more thing that we'll have to research and we'll try to come back with it organized or explain it next time. So the item will still stay tabled. I'll entertain a motion for.
I move we go into executive session there.
Executive session, thank you.
Second.
I have a motion, second to move to executive session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Hold on just a moment. I don't have a, hold on just a moment. I don't have a vote on Bill 1513 to move it for final roll call vote before all of this.
Oh, that's right. We haven't done the final roll call.
So we can hold on.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay.
We're all tied up in still 1512. Okay. So let me call for all those in, oh, we did, because we had one negative down here. Okay, so we did vote. Now, okay, you've heard Bill number 1513 read three times, presented three times. It's now time for final consideration. Please indicate your vote, yes or no, to the roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
No.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
And Mr. Braun?
Yes.
And Mr. Shiland?
Yes.
Seven affirmative and one opposed.
Very good. 1513 passes.
Now, Mr. Mayor, making a motion that we go into closed executive session.
Thank you. I have a motion, second to move to closed executive session. If you would.
Okay, Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Mr. Shiland?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Very good. Thank you. And again, we may do a decision when we come back out for those who are interested. And we'll explain what we were talking about at that time. But again, thank you all for being patient with us and I apologize for the delay, but I think you definitely want to make sure that it's done correctly.
Thank you.